Welcome, everybody. Let's call the meeting order. This is a regular city council business meeting for Wednesday, January 20th, 2021. Let's rise and say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lee, can you do a, can you take roll call, please?
Councilman Scorinji.
Present.
Councilwoman Riley.
Present.
Councilwoman Freeman.
Present.
Councilman Burns.
Present.
Councilman Strong.
Present.
Councilman Scanlon.
Present.
And President Resnetti.
Present.
That's all seven here.
So next, we have the approval of minutes. Councilman Scorinji.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask for a unanimous approval for the minutes from December 23rd, 2020, business meeting and January 4th, 2021 organizational meeting.
All in favor?
Actually, before we do that.
Oh.
Um. I think, so on the agenda tonight, we have the January 6th, 2021 business meeting minutes. I think you just read off the org minutes. Councilman Scorinji.
Did you want me to add that in there as well?
Yes, we were under the impression that we're only approving the January 6th business meeting minutes.
The Janu- the January 6th business, this today is the January 6th business meeting minutes?
No, it's the 20th.
Today is the 20th.
Yes, it is. It might be nice if I knew the date. Um.
The month is fine by, isn't it?
It definitely has, definitely has. I'll take that back, Madam President. I apologize. I'll make motion to approve the business meeting minutes from the January 6th, 2021 meeting.
So.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have two public hearings tonight. Mr. President?
Yes, so we have two public hearings tonight. We'll do them one by one. The first one is introductory ordinance 21 dash 08, and it's ordinance to amend the, the bond ordinance, amending the bond ordinance from July 2020, or from July 22nd, 2020, to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance the construction of a new fire station in the city. And then the the second public hearing will be in regards to the other bond ordinance tonight, which is introductory ordinance 21 dash 09, an ordinance to adopt the bond ordinance authorizing various capital improvements not to exceed $6,525,000. So. And we didn't receive any electronic communications for either public hearing. And we can open up the phone lines now. The phone number to call in is 772-7101. And we'll start with the the first bond in regard to the fire station. The number again is 772-7101. Are you here for the public hearing? Have your full name and address for the record? Yes, and your address? Okay. And you're calling in reference to the bond ordinance for the new fire station, correct? Okay, so that portion of the meeting is in, is in a little bit here, but we have the two public hearings in regards to the bond ordinance first. So if you mind holding on, we can, you can call back in a few minutes. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Can you read the number again?
Sorry about that. So the, again, this is the public hearing for the bond ordinance. So we're only taking calls right now in regards to the bond ordinance. That was Brian Stewart. He'll be calling back later for public comment. So the number again is 772-7101 for the public hearing regarding the bond ordinance for the new fire station. Are you here for the public hearing? Correct, the bonds for the new fire station. Okay, so your full name and address? Okay, I'll put you through. Correct. All right, we'll put you through. Okay, this is Tina Chronopoulos from Laurel Avenue. You have five minutes.
Hi, okay, super hi, good evening. Um, hopefully you can hear me. I just wanted to make a comment on these ordinances. I do understand that it's important that the fire station be moved, renovated, because the floors are giving out. I am a little concerned about the amount of money that you are looking to borrow. And here's the reason why. It seems that the city has, in the last year, done quite a lot of borrowing. For example, you went out and got a bond ordinance, I think, for either $6 million or $9 million for the tennis court in Red Park, about which I saw at the time. And so I'm just concerned that you're adding to the city's debt at a time when it's not necessarily clear that you'll be able to re-chooferate your monies and/or make good on promises that you've been given by the state or the federal government. Again, I recognize the fire station is important in a way that maybe the tennis courts aren't. And I wish you had used your discretion at the time and not gone ahead and borrowed millions of dollars for refurbishing the tennis court so that you might have a little bit more breathing room when it comes to borrowing money for the fire station. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you read the number?
Yes, so the number again, and this is the public hearing for the bond ordinance in relation to the new fire station. The number is 772-7101.
Can you go one more time?
Yes. Well, wait another minute, and the number again is 772-7101. Hi, you're here for public comment? Yes, we are. Okay, thank you. That was another caller for public comment. But we're still on the the bond for the new fire station public hearing. And the number is 772-7101.
Anyone?
Yes.
I don't need a motion to close the server.
Madam President, if there are no other phone calls or incoming communications, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing in relation to introductory ordinance 21 dash 08.
Second.
Go ahead and close the part of the public hearing.
That needs an all in favor.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so at this time, we'll move on to the second bond ordinance public hearing for tonight. And this is for the various capital improvements not to exceed $6,525,000. And the number to call in is 772-7101. The number again for the bond ordinance regarding the capital improvements is 772-7101.
I'm not hearing the phone ring, so I think I'm gonna have a motion to close this public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, so this part of the hearing is closed. Thank you. So now let's move on to public comments. City residents are welcome to call in. You will have five minutes to speak on city issues. Please be respectful. Lee, can you please read the number?
Yes, so now we're on to the public comment portion. And the number for tonight is 772-7101. Next, Lee. Can I actually put you on hold? We have a letter to read.
Oh, that's right. Is there a letter? Thank you.
So we do have one letter tonight to read into the record. And this letter is from the mayor. Members of city council, I want to bring to your attention a disturbing matter involving a political attack on one of your colleagues, city council president Sophia Resnetti and her family. Earlier this month, one of councilwoman Resnetti's children was targeted in a negative social media post by Broom County, by the Broom County Democrat Party. This post was deleted shortly after it was published, following swift bipartisan pushback from those who saw it. As elected officials, our decisions, words, and policies are open to public scrutiny. We find ourselves constantly under the microscope, and we expect this when we run for office. What we don't expect and what we can't accept is for our family members to be subject of political attacks. Children and their spouses of elected officials should never be used for political gain. What happened earlier this month to councilwoman Resnetti's family crossed the line. Most of you on city council have children. And if the tables were turned and your children were targeted, I would feel the same way regardless of your political affiliation. And I would be as vocal in my condemnation. I appreciate the Broom County Democratic Party's admission that former city council member Dan Livingston was behind the attack against councilwoman Resnetti's family. Most of you recall that Mr. Livingston lost his bid for reelection to now council president Resnetti. I believe most of you are also aware that where this is not Mr. Livingston's first time engaging in underhanded political attacks and an attempt to smear an opponent. As a candidate for Broom County Clerk, Mr. Livingston was exposed as the anonymous author of a hit piece against county clerk Joe Mahalco. The mailing omitted any information on how it was funded and contained content that was false. Mr. Livingston eventually admitted he was responsible when, when his involvement was brought to light by a story by Spectrum News. I've included a link to the story in my email to this letter to the city clerk's office. Mr. Livingston was also the focus of an ethics investigation launched by his colleagues on city council. An independent report found he engaged in unethical activity to the hiring of a city intern for political purposes. A copy of that report is on file at City Hall. What hap- what happened to councilwoman Resnetti's family earlier this month is the sort of thing that keeps good people from getting involved in government. And we need good people in government now more than ever. Earlier today, a new president and vice president were sworn into office. They face the very real challenge of healing a divided nation, but they can only do so much. All of us have to do better. It's incumbent upon us, especially as local elected leaders, to set an example for the rest of the community. When we have differences, we should be able to express them with professionalism and respect. Targeting an opponent's family member in an attempted political attack crosses the line in a way that threatens to disrupt city business. And I won't tolerate that. This is the third city council I've worked with as mayor. Regardless of which political party was in power, we've always been able to find the bipartisan working majority necessary to get things done for residents. For that to continue requires all of us to operate in good faith and treat one another with respect, regardless of our differences. I hope I can count on all of you to do that in, in the months ahead. Sincerely, Richard C. David Meyer. And that was the only letter we received. And we can move on to the phones. Hi, are you still there? Okay, you're here for public comment tonight? Okay, what's your full name and address? Uh, the address. And your last name? Sorry, say that again? All right, I'll put you through. Okay, this is Olivia Sams. She's from Thompson Street.
Thank you. I'll be brief. I just wanted to take a moment just to express my disappointment over the recent actions against councilwoman Resnetti and her family by the local Democrats. Council members, can you imagine your child or another family member or loved one of yours being targeted by a political attack aimed at you? I feel that, I just had a call because I feel this is just so wrong. I don't like seeing it at the national level, and I certainly do not like seeing it happen here in our community. Our city, we're so much better than that. And with all of the division and everything that is going on and that we all have to experience in our country, particularly lately and all the time, I just, our local elected officials, you guys need to strive just to rise above that, for example, that's been set by some of our national leaders. And going after someone's child, it's so horrible. And it's never, never acceptable, not at all, not at any cost. And the Resnetti family, I know you guys have been here and you're a part of Binghamton's history. And it's not acceptable for someone who has, you know, provided such good support for our city, and it's not acceptable for anybody. No one deserves to be that kind of treatment. And I just, you know, I certainly hope it doesn't happen again. And I was just very disappointed. And I really just want to thank all of you for all the jobs you're doing. But I just wanted to thank you for your time tonight. So thank you.
Thank you. The number again to call in is 772-7101. This is for public comment. Hi, you're here for public comment? Okay, and what's your name? Okay, I'll put you through. Okay, this is Brian Stewart from Crestmont Street.
Hello, everyone. I just listened to our last caller, and I couldn't agree more. I'm really calling tonight to voice my support for city councilwoman Sophia Resnetti and her family. I just found it incredibly disturbing that the local Democratic Party would target councilwoman Resnetti's child in a political attack. And that's what this was, a political attack on social media earlier this month. You know, I pay attention to what's happening in our community and what our local elected officials are doing. But I rarely call into meetings like this to comment. But I just, I really felt compelled to speak up tonight after what happened to councilwoman's Resnetti's family. It just, it crossed the line. We shouldn't tolerate it in our community, bottom line. I don't know if the Democrats on city council were aware of the attack before it was posted on social media. If they were, they certainly owe councilwoman Resnetti an explanation and a very, very clear apology. At the very least, each of them should take steps to ensure something like this does not happen again. Thank you.
Thank you. The number again to call in is 772-7101. Hi, you're here for public comment? Okay, so your full name and address? Okay, this is Tarek Abdulzim from Tremont Ave.
Hi, um, just, this is not what I was gonna call him, but given the last few calls and the mayor's public letter, I just, I stayed as a father, I too was disappointed to see that, as were many other Democrats, this had nothing to do with the organized party, was immediately removed. I think trying to make hay of this is a political move. I even believe the Broom County Democratic Party apologized. What I'd love to see is many local Republicans show the same courage and apologize for the gentleman who had occupied the White House for the last four years and vilified and attacked people of all races, of all abilities, all Americans. And I will, I won't hold my breath, but if you wonder, I'll say if they would do the same. Also, if the mayor wants to, in the next meeting, he can issue a letter also attacking Broom County Republican Chairman Bijoy Dana for more than a decade of political hits on decent citizens who wanted to serve their communities. He can also, again, apologize for Jared Crams on ethical behavior and manipulating news headlines for months while he was in office. And if he really wants to steal leadership as, as he claims to be leading the panel on police reform, he can offer apology for vilifying the Human Rights Commission, slamming the integrity and the professionalism, as well as dismissing and mocking those in the community that have been calling for racial justice reforms for years. Now, onto a couple other comments. I just wanted to say that the mayor, as part of the New York Conference of Mayors, issued a press release talking about local aid that has been held up by Governor Cuomo. And in that, he indicated that Binghamton has been shorted more than $2 million. I don't know if that has been a discussion with the city council, but I know when there was budget discussions last year, there was a bunch of lines that were put into contingency budget such that if aid didn't come through, or that the Cuomo went forward with his 20% cuts, those positions would not be funded. So I hope that there's gonna be action on that if, in fact, we are going to be shorted 20% of our, our local aid. I believe the, there was only Democratic councils that argued to put that money aside as a move that was fiscally responsible. They were right, and I hope that you all take measures to protect local taxpayers. And then finally, I would say that it's very odd that as the mayor, again, moving forward with talks about being a champion for transparency and commitment, that right after his cub reporter slash executive assistant announced his mayoral campaign, that seven years of news releases were immediately and abruptly unpublished from the city website. If anyone goes to the website, the only news release is there from January 1st today. That seems like the odd and suspicious move to hide a record of comments and performance. And I would ask council members to encourage the mayor to reverse that decision and not only republish all of the press releases from his seven years in office, but all of the other press releases from the prior administration that he unpublished and hid his first week in office. Finally, I'll be hoping to have a conversation with council members over the next few months regarding our broken and inequitable assessment system. Housing is a crisis. As we've seen, housing is health.
Give one minute.
And, thank you. And I have done plenty of research over the last couple of years. I've written articles about it showing that our broken and inequitable assessment system favors landlords of student rental properties and downtown business owners and, and developers. And the folks that are getting hurt are the small mom and pop landlords that are trying to rent to families and homeowners in our neighborhoods. We might be the one community in New York State that has one of the oldest assessment systems. And again, if we truly believe in fairness and equity, this is an issue that needs to be addressed. And again, I'll be coming down with more information and providing counsel with a comprehensive packet of information in hopes that we can finally see change and start to think about comprehensive approach to providing housing security for everybody in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the number again to call in tonight is 772-7101. Hi, you're here for public comment? Your name and address? Okay, I'll put you through. Okay, this is Tina Chronopoulos from Laurel Ave.
Hi, good evening. My representative on council is Sophia Resnetti. And the D my name is Tina Chronopoulos. There are a number of issues I would like to address this evening. First, I have to say that it seems to me that the mayor's office is acting in what one might refer to as duplicitous ways. I'm referring to the tweet put out by Mayor David on the 11th of January when he wrote that he thanked Governor Cuomo for making criminal justice a focus of the state of the state address and recognizing Binghamton's efforts on public safety innovation and 21st century policing. That is a rather grand and overblown statement. What the governor said was this, quote, "Binghamton enlisted a professional institution to help in their redesign," unquote. Governor Cuomo also said that, quote, "Salamanca has the distinction of being the first locality to complete and pass a new plan. April 1st is just weeks away. Elected leaders must lead, and people must engage now," unquote. I take issue with the mayor's tweet on the handling of the police reform initiative in a number of ways. First, why do the mayor and his executive assistant go around telling everyone that Binghamton as a listed a professional institution to help with that police reform task force when the contract with this professional institution has not yet even been come up, has come up for vote with city council? What are you doing, Mayor David and executive assistant, in bypassing the correct and proper channels? You ought to first obtain a vote from city You ought to first obtain a vote from City Council on whether or not to contract with an offset institution before claiming that you have engaged that institution. By the way, Binghamton is not the only city in the state who has engaged that institution, so don't think that you are somehow being innovative. As the governor mentions in his state address and as outlined in the police reform workbook issued by the state, the timetable for putting the task force together suggests that these task forces listen to and learn from their communities for two months. Then the task force ought to spend a month drafting an initial proposal, which would then go out for public comment for a month. The way that the city has set up its police reform initiative is a slap in the face for our community. What you have done is streamline a process that is supposed to be rooted in collaboration and community engagement, and you have shrunk a process that was supposed to take place over eight months into a timeframe of two and a half months. If I didn't know better, I would think that you are being incompetent. But I know now, just from paying attention to the way that the city does things under the leadership of Mayor David and his executive assistant, that you are working hard to make yourselves look good and clamp down on the possibility of dissenting voices making themselves heard or participating meaningfully in this process. This is not leadership that values the community, and this is definitely not leadership that prizes transparency. The second issue I would like to address is the question of whether or not the Binghamton Police Department is truly as excellent as some would have. Before I elaborate, however, I'd like to share with you that I've recently observed a pattern, and I'm a little upset with myself actually for not noticing it sooner. Here is my observation. Whenever I phone and make a critical comment about the Binghamton Police Department, there are two council members in particular, and you know who you are, who, as if on cue and very predictably, sing the praises of the police department at the end of the meeting. It's as if you cannot stand it when someone has something negative to say about the police. Well, here's your cue, and I'm really looking forward to hearing what great things you've got to say about the police department at Binghamton this evening. Let me tell you the ways in which, under Mayor David, the Binghamton Police Department has become less than transparent. Not only has the mayor not appointed anyone to the Human Rights Commission, he has also overseen a department whose presence on the internet is rather meager at best. I do note with interest that in the last couple of weeks, changes have been made to the website. Of course, you are now trying to portray a police department that is outward facing and accessible, but your effort is weak at best. There is still no obvious way for city residents and civilians to submit a complaint against the employee of the police department. Where are the annual police reports that would help the public better understand the work being done by the police department? And finally, as you all know, the department has serious difficulties in recruiting people of color into its ranks. This isn't just because people of color aren't taking the civil service test. No, it's because the department and some of the leadership are known to be racist. This can be seen in a number of lawsuits brought against the department over the last years and also in the way that policing takes place in our neighborhoods. No matter how much diversity training you prescribe, until the Binghamton Police Department and those in leadership positions in the city own up to the fact that white supremacy is a problem, not just in Binghamton but also nationwide, nothing will change. And I wish those of you in leadership positions could be open to discussion, discussing issues such as white supremacy, racism, and sexism openly in these meetings and in your various departments, rather than pretending everything is contradictory in our community when it potentially isn't. Thank you.
Thank you. The number again to call in is 772-7101. The number again for public comment is 772-7101.
Wait just a few more seconds.
Hey, Madam President. Yeah, hi. Can I make a comment? If I can quiet the dog down. But, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Regarding the, um, the mayor's letter and the calls, I would like to apologize to our council president for the attack on her daughter and bringing her family into politics. On the day that it, I'm not telling, uh, Councilwoman Restonetti anything. She already knows what I'm gonna say, and that is that it was up for about 25 minutes. It was put up on the county website.
Oh, sorry, because for my own theory, I'm just wondering, is this, should we close public comments first? And then do the current council member comments, or how does this work?
This is Ken Frank.
Hi, Ken.
Councilwoman Burns, I appreciate your sentiment, but when the public hearing is closed, and certainly this can be part of correspondence from council. Council President, if you want to give a minute to, you know, allow this after the public hearing is, public comment is closed.
This is public comment. The hearing is over. This is public comment.
No, but during public comment, that's for the public, not for the members of council. When public comment is complete, if the council president would like to give you a minute, certainly she can.
I've been to many meetings where people have commented to people that have called. So I would like to finish my comment, and that is.
City council members.
I don't care. Just be quiet. Just let me speak. I listened to those calls, and I just want everybody to know that the Democratic Party, that was one volunteer that put that up. It was outrageous. When I saw that on, when I saw that on the website, I immediately called our leadership, Terry Renia and Bridget Callahan. They had it taken down immediately, and they were as angry and outraged as I was, and not as angry as Councilwoman Restonetti, but it was, obviously, it was her daughter. But it is not the Democratic Party that did this. It was one person, and one person only. And the rest of the Democratic Party was completely outraged and had it taken down immediately. Thank you very much.
Do you want to close the number?
Yeah.
Okay. So the number again, if anyone would like to call in for public comment, is 772-7101.
Okay, let's close this off. Comment. And we don't need a motion for that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So then, at this point, we are going to move on to the preferred agenda. Would anyone like to pull anything from the preferred agenda before we move on?
Yeah. Madam President.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. As a matter of just the process, we need to pull introductory ordinance 21-08 and introductory ordinance 21-09 from the preferred agenda as they require additional motions under the State Environment Quality Review Act.
So we can move on with the preferred agenda?
No. This is Councilwoman Riley. I'd also like to pull introductory resolution 2105 from the preferred agenda.
This is Councilwoman Friedman. I would also like to pull some resolutions from the preferred agenda. You look like you're writing, so I didn't want to interrupt, but I would also please like to remove introductory resolution 2103, 2104, and 2106 from the preferred agenda, please.
Why don't we just pull them all? What the heck?
Is there a reason? I guess, I don't know if this is a reason why we're pulling all of these?
I'm, I'm happy to give my reasoning now. I also am happy to comment when they come up. So I, whatever you would prefer.
You can comment when, when it's time. Thanks. So can we move on then?
Yes. So just to be clear, so we've pulled 2108, 2109, and then resolution 21-03, resolution 21-04, and resolution 21-05.
Was there a 06 as well? Did I hear that?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Friedman. I requested to pull resolution 2106 from the preferred agenda.
Okay. That's why I wanted to double check quick before we move on. Okay.
Go ahead. Yes, thank you.
Okay, so the first item in the preferred agenda that hasn't been pulled is introductory ordinance 21-10, and it's considered in finance. This is an ordinance to accept a grant from Broom County Government Brown Field Fund in, in the amount of $29,017.50 and amend the 2021 capital budget for demolition.
Any comments? Okay. Thank you. Next.
Okay, next is introductory ordinance 21-11, considered in finance. And this is an ordinance to amend the 2020 Binghamton-Johnson City Joint Switch Treatment Facilities capital budget for city debt service.
Any comments?
Next, we have introductory ordinance 21-12, considered in finance. And this is an ordinance to amend the 2020 refuse disposal budget to the cost of garbage bags.
Any comments?
And then, the last item on the preferred agenda is introductory resolution 21-07. This is considered in finance. A resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding for the submittal of a regional assistance to firefighters' grant for extrication tools for the City of Binghamton Fire Bureau.
Any comments? Okay. So I think now we need a motion to approve the preferred agenda.
So moved.
Oh, I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, that passes?
We need to do.
Oh, yeah. Yes, we do. Thank you.
Okay. So this is for the preferred agenda. Councilwoman Skorindji?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strong?
Aye.
Councilman Scanlon?
Aye.
And President Restonetti?
Aye.
That's seven i's, zero nays.
So now, we have items on the non-preferred agenda with consideration. Let's have Councilwoman Strong start out by introducing the introductory ordinance 21-28.
Thank you, Madam President. Introductory ordinance 2108, I'm gonna read the, read the ordinance, and then I'm going to go through, take us through the three motions under, under the seeker provisions. Introductory ordinance 2108 is an ordinance to amend the bond ordinance of the City of Binghamton, New York, adopted January 20th, 2021, amending the bond that's adopted July 20th, 2020, to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance the construction of a new fire station in the city.
Second.
Okay, I will now read the first motion under seeker. The first motion is to declare the City Council as lead agency under seeker.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Okay, thank you. The second motion is to identify the proposed action as unlisted under seeker.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'll read this, and then I've gotta to read the entire text of the, of the third motion. The third motion is to issue a negative declaration under seeker for the following reasons. Nature of act, an ordinance authorizing issuance of 7,700,000 serial bonds to finance proposed construction of a new fire station at 235 Court Street, Binghamton, New York. The City of Binghamton, City Council, has determined that the proposed action described above is an unlisted action. Court Street is the main commercial street in the City of Binghamton. The property is in a C1 service commercial district, which allows such uses as light industrial bus depot and dormitory. While currently vacant, the most recent use of the property was classified as 433 auto body. It is close to access to downtown Route 11 and 7, the Brandywine Parkway. The city owns adjacent properties on Pine Street, allowing for improved ingress and egress. The city has also been advised by the New York State Department of Transportation that the property can access Chapman Street, thus minimizing potential impacts on Court Street and Pine Street. The New York State Historic Preservation Office, SHPO, has determined that the existing structure on the property is not historically significant. While authorizing a bond for construction is an important step in the process, the project cannot move forward until there are additional public hearings, site plan review for various impacts, including traffic noise, et cetera, approval from the City of Binghamton Commission on Architecture and Urban Design, the CAUD, including a final seeker determination. Thus, it is anticipated that this initial seeker determination will be supplemented as the process evolves and before construction commences. Based on the foregoing, it has determined that approval of 7,700,000 serial bonds to finance construction of the proposed new fire station at 235 Court Street, Binghamton, New York, for the proposed new fire station will not have a significant impact on the environment.
Second.
Okay, so this needs a full roll call vote for the negative declaration motion. So, Councilwoman Skorindji?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strong?
Aye.
Councilman Scanlon?
Aye.
The Restonetti?
Aye.
That's seven i's, zero nays.
All right, thank you. Thank you. I now ask council for unanimous consideration of introductory ordinance 21-08, an ordinance to amend the bond ordinance of the City of Binghamton, New York, adopted January 20th, 2021, amending the bond ordinance adopted July 22nd, 2020, to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance the construction of a new fire station in the city.
I'll second that again, Madam President.
Thank you.
Is there any discussion?
Any discussion?
I'll call the question, Madam President.
Okay. Councilwoman Skorindji?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns? Sorry, Councilman Burns, are you muted?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilman Strong?
Aye.
Councilman Scanlon?
Aye.
And President Restonetti?
Aye.
That's seven i's, zero nays.
Thank you. So next, we have the introductory orders 21-09. And Strong.
Thank you, Madam President. Introductory ordinance 21-09 is an ordinance to adopt the bond ordinance of the City of Binghamton, New York, adopted January 20th, 2021, authorizing various capital improvements in and for the city, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is $6,525,000, appropriating said amount for such purpose and authorizing the issuance of bonds of the city in the principal amount not to exceed $6,525,000. Said appropriation. So requires, oh, sorry, this ordinance also requires three motions under seeker. First motion is to declare the City Council as lead agency under seeker.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Thank you. Second motion is to identify the proposed action as unlisted under seeker.
Second. Second.
Councilman Strong, this is Kenneth Frank. It's actually, in this case, I think the template I made an error. It's actually to identify this is a type-two motion, as a type-two action under seeker.
Okay, I apologize. Motion to identify this is a type-two action under seeker.
Second.
Okay. And that's all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Third motion to issue a negative declaration under seeker for the following reasons. Nature of action, an ordinance authorizing issuance of six million five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars serial bonds to finance two thousand twenty-one capital projects. The project for interior renovations, replacement, rehabilitation, or reconstruction of existing structures or facilities, water and sewer connections, repaving of existing highways not involving the addition of new travel lanes, street openings, and right-of-way openings for the purpose of repair or maintenance of existing utility facilities, various equipment needs, and parking garage repairs. Findings. The City of Binghamton City Council has determined that the proposed action described above is a type-two action based on section six seventeen point five, type-two C-one, maintenance or repair involving no substantial changes in an existing structure or facility. Two, replacement, rehabilitation, or reconstruction of a structure or facility in kind on the same site, including upgrading buildings to meet building or fire codes, unless such action meets or exceeds any of the thresholds in section six seventeen point four of this part. Four, repaving of existing highways not involving the addition of new travel lanes. Five, street openings and right-of-way openings for the purpose of repair or maintenance of existing utility facilities. Thirteen, extension of utility distribution facilities, including gas, electric, telephone cable, water, and sewer connections to render service in approved subdivisions or in connection with any action on this list, and twenty-one minor temporary uses of land having negligible or no permanent impact on the environment, and no further environmental review is necessary.
Second.
So that requires a full roll call vote? So, Councilman Skorindji?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Aye.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns?
Aye.
Councilman Strong?
Aye.
Councilman Scanlon?
Aye.
And President Resnaddy?
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. I now ask city council for unanimous consideration of introductory ordinance twenty-one dash zero nine, an ordinance to adopt the bond ordinance of the City of Binghamton, New York, adopted January twentieth, two thousand twenty-one, authorizing various capital improvements in and for the city, stating the estimated maximum cost thereof is six million five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, appropriating said amount for such purpose and authorizing the issuance of bonds of the city in the principal amount of not to exceed six million five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to finance said appropriation.
Second.
Any questions? Can someone call the question?
Call the question, Madam President.
Councilman Skorindji?
Aye.
Councilwoman Riley?
Nay.
Councilwoman Friedman?
Aye.
Councilman Burns? Sorry, Councilman Burns, are you muted again?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilman Strong?
Aye.
Councilman Scanlon?
Aye.
President Resnaddy?
Aye.
That's six ayes, one nay, Riley.
Okay, up and down with our preferred agenda?
The non-preferred agenda.
Yes, non-preferred agenda. introductory resolution twenty-one dash oh three, considered in finance. Strong.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask council for unanimous consideration of introductory resolution twenty-one dash zero three, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into supplemental agreement number three for USA COE, NYSDEC, pipe conduit inspection, and maintenance and rehabilitation work.
Second.
Any comments?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Friedman.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. So now I'm happy to explain why I felt the need to pull this from the preferred agenda. But first, I would just like to make a comment in general about having it preferred agenda that that is supposed to be a tool of convenience for us if there is legislation that we don't feel, that we feel can be voted on as a law together. I certainly was not elected to just make meetings the most convenient for me. You know, I, of course, want to function as efficiently as possible, but it is our duty as elected officials to give legislation the proper examination and educate ourselves properly. We owe that to our constituents. So having said that, I do believe that we need to expedite legislation judiciously. And there are multiple items, almost everything from the work session that was held yesterday, is expedited. I believe that expediting is a tool that is necessary to have in our toolbox, but it cannot be the rule and rather should be the exception for imminent deadlines or rapidly changing information or something that necessitates us to hurry something through. Now, these three resolutions do, are, you know, necessary, and probably I will vote in support of them. However, based on the slate of legislation that is already expedited, I am going to make a motion to, to hold over this, this resolution because it's, like I said, we need to, we need to expedite judiciously. And while I probably will vote in support of this, I don't feel like that it's responsible to push this through so quickly along with everything else that is also expedited. So in conclusion, I'm going to make a motion to hold this over until our next business meeting.
Second.
Hey, I will ask for a special meeting for this, and I'd like to schedule that tomorrow.
This is Councilwoman Friedman. Just to clarify, that we will schedule, we will do the scheduling of the meeting tomorrow? Or are you asking that the meeting be scheduled for tomorrow?
I'm asking that the meeting is scheduled for tomorrow.
Madam President?
Yes.
May I suggest that you have Lee do a roll call to see who can make the meeting tomorrow night?
Okay, thank you.
Sure, we can do that. Okay. Is there a specific time you want it to do tomorrow?
Just for my own clarification, Lee, is there any rules? I would say six o'clock, maybe? I mean, unless there's anything that...
Ten is six o'clock tomorrow. Enough time? I know we need twenty-four hours.
It's twenty-four hours from this meeting.
Okay. So, Councilman Skorindji, are you available tomorrow at six P M?
Um. If we're only, if we're only meeting not that long to meet for the purpose of just passing any particular RLs that need to be, yes, six P M should work. I have a, I have a community meeting that I have to attend at seven-thirty. So if it's at six P M, that should be a sufficient amount of time, I think.
Councilwoman Riley, are you available tomorrow at six P M?
Again, like Councilman Skorindji, I do have a standing until seven, but I may be able to leave if we know this will be, what, thirty minutes? Is that what we're projecting?
Can't imagine it would take much longer than that.
Okay, I would have to make some changes, but if we, if we could meet at seven, then I'm on board. I know, Councilman Skorindji, you have another conflict, but, I mean, I would have to make some...
Thirty minutes, I would think.
Okay.
Yeah, we've, we've had a few of these in the past. I don't think they've, I don't think they've gone over ten or fifteen minutes. But, I mean, if we had to push it to, to seven, I could, I could make that work as the meeting starts at seven-thirty. So if that works better, I can do that as well.
Thank you. I would, I would also, then, if it works with Councilman Skorindji, seven would be preferred for me.
Madam President, can I make a comment, please?
Yes.
Let's go through the whole roll call before we determine who can make it, who can't, please. Madam President, is your six o'clock meeting?
Councilwoman Friedman, are you available tomorrow at six or seven?
No, I'm not. I have meetings at six o'clock and at seven-thirty tomorrow.
Councilman Burns, are you available tomorrow evening?
I'm good for tomorrow.
Councilman Strong, are you available tomorrow evening?
Yeah, I'm available. I'd just like to comment that I think that this is a horrific waste of time to do it this way. But I just, I understand we have the right, right to do it. But I feel like just to make a, make a point on the process is ridiculous without a substantive reason why we wouldn't approve this right now and avoid a special meeting. But I am available, if that's what we said.
Thank you.
Councilman Scanlon, are you available tomorrow evening?
I am available, yes.
Yes, I'm available.
So, the only death we have for tomorrow evening is Councilwoman... Yeah, we would still have more.
Yeah.
Do you like to announce the meeting?
Yes.
For six, seven?
I would like to announce the meeting for, sounds like we're available at seven o'clock tomorrow.
But I couldn't, I couldn't hear you. Sorry.
Hey, let me make a comment. Councilman Burns, feed that dog, will ya?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Okay. We'll try again. I would like to set the meeting for tomorrow at seven P M. Sounds like that's the time that works for most, and it accommodates Councilwoman Riley as well. And it sounds like it should not take long at all. So, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
May I ask a question? This is Councilwoman Friedman. Thank you, Madam President. I, I was just wondering if you could shed more light on to why we're doing this at a special business meeting and why we can't vote on this at our next regularly scheduled business meeting?
I believe that's the counsel, that's the counsel president's prerogative. That's my opinion. So, I'm not sure she has that for you. It's up to her.
No, no, go ahead. Thank you, Councilwoman. Oh, my gosh, I forget his name there. Thank you. There's no reason to delay this any further, and that's really that. Thank you. Let's move on.
So, do you want to announce the next item of introductory?
Yes. Just wanted to make sure that we have ordered. Yes, so moving on, introductory resolution twenty-one oh four, considered in finance.
Thank you, Madam President. Council for unanimous consideration of introductory resolution, resolution twenty-one dash zero four, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into supplemental number two with Barton and Legudis DPC for additional design, inspection, construction management services for the Sixth Ward Interceptor Project.
Second, Madam President.
Any questions?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Friedman.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to hold this resolution over as well, following along with my reasoning to the prior one. I don't believe it's a responsible decision to expedite the entire, or not the entire, that's an exaggeration. But I don't believe that we are doing our due diligence as elected officials to very quickly vote on things that are pages and pages long while we are expediting multiple other pieces of legislation as well. Therefore, I'm going to make a motion to hold this over as well.
Wait one second then.
I'll second it.
We will add that to the agenda tomorrow.
Now we can move on to twenty-one oh five.
Yep, introductory resolution twenty-one dash oh five, considered municipal and public affairs. Councilman Scanlon?
Sorry, I was muted there for a second. A resolution authorized the mayor to enter into a professional services agreement with the John F. N. Institute for Public Safety Incorporated to provide technical assistance for the Binghamton Police Reform and Re-Invention Collaboration.
I'll second that.
Any comments?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Riley. Yes, thank you. As you guys know, yesterday, we received the resolution for our review and our discussion yesterday. The first time I heard about the Finn Institute was in the letter sent outlining the reinvestment, reimagining process, the executive order process from the leadership of the city. Yesterday, I inquired about the documents as we received regarding the timeline, regarding the expectation. In fact, I can be quoted at saying, how are we defining what is expected of this organization by which many of our constituents are very interested in seeing bode well, right? And we're excited about the process, and we've heard what happens in other cities. However, who is responsible for ensuring they meet expectations? If council signs this right now, are we able to say we know enough about what we're signing on to from this agency? If we have a question about their process and the execution of said process, is that in the contract? I just think there's more information that we as council owe to those we are beholden to, to be able to answer, and I can't answer those questions right now.
Any other comments?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Friedman. Madam President, may I go ahead?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, great. Thank you. I would like to second the comments by my colleague, Councilwoman Riley. I also would like to add that going on the theme of a lot of my comments tonight, the timeline of this is, I believe, has been artificially rushed where we now, as council, are put in the situation where we're, you know, we're sort of forced to rush through this, in approving this, this contract, which, you know, like Councilwoman Riley said, we don't have the specific, you know, verbiage of the contract. So this is such an important initiative that, you know, we, we owe it to our constituents, and I can say from, you know, I owe it to my constituents, a lot of whom are negatively affected by their interactions with the police, that we, we do this right. And I, you know, just not, being asked to vote on a contract that we don't yet have... And I, you know, just not being asked to vote on a contract that we don't yet have is troubling to me. So I'm uncomfortable being put in this position, but absolutely, I want to echo Councilwoman Riley completely.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, this is Councilwoman Burns. In regards to the Finn contract, you know, they, I would like to be able to speak to Finn about what they did. I know they worked with Schenectady, and we talked about this at the meeting the other night. But they did a public survey that they sent out, and they kept track of all the information from that survey that came back from the public. Are they going to do that for us? Is that included in the price of the contract? Also, in regards to the plan, so that we're having this, it's still not clear to me, and I've spoken to other people that are on the collaborative, is that we are coming up with a plan. And is the, then the plan is being put over onto us, to the City Council. And according to the governor's order, that we then have to pass a law based on this collaborative. So Ken gave me an answer, an email answer, and I then got confused again because last night Jared said that we're voting on a plan. The City Council, we're going to vote on a plan. And I then went back and looked at the governor's state of the state of the state speech. And in it, he said that the collaborative is going to be, the City Councils must pass into law what we are getting from the collaborative. So my question is, it's been, they're going to draw, you know, based on everything that happens, then they're going to hand over what this plan is. Then the plan is going to come to us, Madam President. So then are we then going to develop a law based on this plan? Because what Jared said last night that we're voting on a plan, I don't want to vote on a plan. I want to vote on policies that are going to change things. If we have a plan, you know, President, our president that just left this morning, he had a plan for health care that he was going to tell us all about. And that plan, he had a plan that nobody knew what, you know, I mean, the plan never happened. So I don't want to come up with a plan for, you know, police policies that never, never change, you know? So and I'm very interested to see what the collaborative comes up with. I personally, you know, I love the Binghamton Police Department, and I'm not anti-police or anything like that. I'm pro-police, and I want to make the police department better. But we need to know exactly what this Finn is doing and exactly what we are doing, and what exactly City Council is doing. Because I think it is a very big deal. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, President Resonetti, this is Councilwoman Riley once again. So I make a motion that we hold this piece of legislation over. Hoping that we can get everything that was asked, not only here, but also via email yesterday and today.
This is Councilwoman Friedman. I'll second.
Okay, let's add that to the agenda for tomorrow.
Well.
Okay, so.
Question. If we don't have the information requested by tomorrow.
Madam President, it's your prerogative to discuss this tomorrow's meeting to vote on this.
Yes, we will discuss this tomorrow. I'm not sure exactly what information you have. Councilwoman Riley, feel free to make any calls or whatever you need to do to get what you feel is appropriate for you be there at the meeting tomorrow so we can address this. Thank you. Do we, moving on to, I'm sorry, I lost my.
Twenty one oh.
Twenty one oh six. Or is introductory resolution twenty one dash oh six, considered finance? Councilman Strong.
Thank you, Madam President. I ask counsel for unanimous consideration of introductory resolution twenty one dash zero six, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into supplemental agreement one, excuse me, with Barton and La Judas DPC for additional services for the Deco District Streetscape Improvement Project.
Second.
Any comments, questions?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Friedman.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Friedman.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to hold this piece of legislation over given my previously stated reasoning for resolutions oh three and oh four.
Your second?
Second.
We will add that to our agenda for tomorrow. Okay, so moving on.
That should be everything we can move on to.
Yes. Trying to think where we left off last week. We're at the council comments section. I believe Councilman Skorinji went, so we will begin with Councilwoman Riley.
Thank you, Council President Resonetti. I did have a lot of prepared statements, but I do want to start off. Many don't know, but Sophia Resonetti was part of my search committee and part of the team that decided to bring me into Binghamton University. And although it seems as if we oppose each other on a lot of views, we are able to work amicably. People, many people don't know, but earlier this year, my child was a part of an issue. I shared it with Tom. I didn't want to make it a political thing, but he does know that it shifted the way I responded. And I don't agree. Unfortunately, I missed the entire post because, again, I was at work doing a thousand things, and I heard the melee afterwards. But I oppose anything that negatively affects our families. You know, my child is pretty much everywhere I go, and I would not want anything done to slander her or make her feel unsafe. So I say all of that to say, I am thankful to hear the words of our mayor. You know, he and I also have interesting words when we're together. And I was encouraged by the points that he brought up about unifying. Again, many don't know, but we've also tried to have unification events amongst council. Except some people wanted to make sure we had libations and some people did not. But it tells you that we are really trying to work towards a body that doesn't necessarily agree, but is able to work to benefit the entire city. And that's truly our goal. So today was a momentous occasion for me, and it restored my hope in the ability to serve the country, serve our community, and legislate as we should. However, we cannot properly legislate if we are not given the tools, if we are not given the information, if we are not given what is expected as members of a council elected by a body for which we represent. So I, again, am encouraged by those words that were read by the clerk, and I look forward to us living that, those words, the sentiment of unity, the sentiments Amanda Gorman presented from the podium today, that we are striving to forge our union with purpose. So again, I thank you guys, and let's keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Riley. We move on to Councilwoman Friedman.
Thank you, Madam President. Happy inauguration day, everybody. I was fortunate enough to be able to catch the the presidential address. And like many people, I'm sure, I was reflecting on the words that Joe Biden said, his first, you know, address as president. And one of the themes in his speech was about unity. So it's interesting, we certainly didn't plan this, but Councilwoman Riley also was was talking about unity as well. And while I, I think unity, of course, is an important concept in many ways on this body, you know, can we legislate effectively? Can we, you know, can we come together in the best interests of our constituents? And, you know, come unity in terms of recognizing the humanity in others and passing policies which allow people to not only survive but thrive. I was also reflecting on the concept of unity and coming together. And I, I never want that to be used as a tactic to silence those who are rightfully calling for change. Often when somebody brings up a grievance, for example, like, you know, the protests that erupted over the summer after the murder of George Floyd, which then, you know, put into into motion these police reinvention and reimagination collaboratives. Often after things like that happen, those who do not want to confront the uncomfortable reality will say things like, oh, we need to come together, we need to, you know, we need to heal. And healing can't happen unless we address these issues. So while unity is important, we also have to recognize that sometimes people will break from a unified body to bring up a grievance. And sometimes it's an issue of life or death, you know, as it often is when civil unrest erupts. So unity, we need to unite in order to effectively legislate for our constituents. And that also involves listening to those who are who are screaming for things to change because thus far it hasn't been working out for, you know, for whatever reason, the current policies do not benefit them. So I take unity with a grain of salt, and certainly it was, in a lot of ways, an inspiring speech. So that is how I plan to legislate going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We are moving on to Councilman Burns.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to apologize to Ken for being short there during the public comment. And I was just, I was commenting on public comment. My comments had to do with the people that had called in. And again, I'd like to apologize again to to our president of City Council for that post that was put up by by that volunteer. I don't have anything more to say tonight. I'm concerned about the collaborative. I'm nervous to be on it, to tell you the truth. I really want us to, I really want us to get what the entire community from every side of town, I want to hear what they have to say. And just to make that, you know, like Schenectady, you talk about, oh, we're going to have Finn, the same people that did Schenectady. But Schenectady did this over months, not over a month. And if I had my druthers, you know, we could have, City Council could have a public hearing on whatever it is, on this law that we are going to pass, hopefully. And a real public hearing where we don't have the public hearing and then the next, and vote on it the same day, that people from the south side and the west side and and every side could tell us what they feel and what they want. And I don't think there's enough time to do that. So I want to do the best job that we can do based on the time that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Burns. Moving on to Councilman Strong.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to, I just want to reiterate how horrible I feel after, you know, learning of the the attack on Council President Resonetti's family and, you know, specifically your daughter. I just, I don't want to beat a dead horse. I just think, you know, I just think we're all in this together in that sense. I know we all have families, whether we have our own children, we are children. And, you know, I'm concerned about safety as well. I mean, in this environment, we live together. I think I respect the comment of one of the gentlemen earlier, but, you know, to denounce the former President of the United States. But, I mean, we live here. This is local. This is just us as this group trying to do the best we can to to help the city that we all love and that we all live in. And obviously, we could see each other at the Weis, at the Walmart, we could see each other wherever, or other people could see us. And I just, you know, I just think that for us to stand together in solidarity and respecting those boundaries is of utmost importance. I do appreciate Councilman Burns, you know, vehement putting that down and saying that it was incorrect. You know, I think there is reason to believe in me doing some due diligence, that it wasn't just a volunteer. But I guess those are the points that we could talk about later. Or not, maybe that's a moot point at this point. But I just think that, like I said, we're, you know, we live here. We all live here, and it's just, it's, I want to say it's different than the president, but it is a little bit different because, you know, we're, you know, when they say politics is local, this is basically as local as it gets. And anyway, I just want to stand in support of Councilwoman Resonetti's family. I've met them. They're great. And just another, I mean, I don't agree with everything in, you know, certain administrations or whatever, but man, I would, I would, whether it was President Obama or President Clinton or President Bush or President Trump, I'd give anything to have had the opportunity to serve at the White House, just as a respect of the White House and what it stands and what that means. And I just think it's sad that we can't look at that as a positive, something positive that she did to help her career and her resume and her experience, and not just mix it in with your feelings of the personality of the president. I think almost any of us or our children, we would support them to take that opportunity regardless of who was actually, you know, in the White House at that time. I'm sure that, you know, maybe not, but I bet you that Sophia's daughter would go back and serve with the president now if she had that opportunity again. So anyway, I just, enough said. I thank you for the the things that have already been said in support of Councilman Resonetti, and just want to stand in solidarity with her and all of you too. If anything, like this happens to any one of our children or any one of us, I think that we would all have each other's backs. I appreciate that.
All said.
Thank you, Councilman Strong. I appreciate that. Councilman Scanlon, you're next.
Thank you, Madam President. Regarding the post, marrying Councilwoman, Council President Resonetti involving her daughter, I saw a screenshot that indicated the party chairman on the Democratic side knew about this post, was involved in a post, and then lied about the fact after the post came out, she lied about it. So if I saw those screenshots, I'm fairly certain the Democrats on City Council saw those screenshots. And to claim anything else would be less than truthful. If I did appalling, the Democratic Party Chairman lied about this post, knew about it, lied about it after one up. And I'm not sure what's more appalling, the fact that she lied about it, knew about it, or the fact that she or the fact that she's still the party chairman. I'll move on to something else here. Regarding the police commission here, I've heard, I'm not sure who's talking in the background. Regardless, police commissioner, I've, I've heard Councilwoman Riley and Councilwoman Freeman complain there was not enough time to get this done. And now they're attempting to delay this. I'm not sure what, you can't have it both ways. Councilwoman Freeman, you heard yet last night of you were asking everybody why they wanted expedite these RLs. You heard their answers. I don't know whether you did not believe them or they weren't truthful to you. I'm not sure what happened there. But to delay the meetings, just to delay the meetings, doesn't make any sense to me. We're going to have a special meeting every time you do this and it will get passed the next meeting. So I'm not sure what the delay is about. Just, you know, like procedure, then let's talk about procedure. Also, Tina Chronopoulos said earlier that the tennis courts cost $6 to $8 million. I'd love to see a tennis court dent nice, but the tennis courts at Red Park, $1.4 million. And actually she was wrong again. So Madam President, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Councilwoman Scanlon. And now, Councilwoman Coringie.
Thank you, Madam President. I think over the last few months, due to the, due to a number of factors, including the political environment, I've, I've resided myself during this portion of these meetings to be much more conservative in my speech and my responses. But you know, the, what occurred with this post is disgusting. And it crosses, it crosses a line. You do not disrespect family. That's just how I was raised. You know, I actually, I was thinking about this today and I went back and I was looking at some old RLs that that we had passed, that this body has passed in, in the past few years. And there's something I'd like to read. Whereas in Binghamton's 150-year history, it has always been and will continue to be a welcoming city. Scores of elected officials and city employees have been sons and daughters of immigrants. And elected leaders have been foreign born or first generation immigrants themselves. Whereas Binghamton is committed to continue building a welcoming, safe and hate-free environment and to encourage business leaders, civic groups, community institutions and residents to join in a community-wide effort to advance practices that promote inclusion and equity. Those were two statements that were passed by this body in the non-binding welcoming resolution back in 2017. And with one action, with a social media post that is nameless and faceless, the meaning of those words are just lost. That passed unanimously with comments from hundreds of constituents who showed up to meetings, who showed up in support of it. That non-binding resolution was passed in response to a national conversation about equity and unity. And those words are just completely forgotten simply because certain individuals chose political expediency over unity. You know, and the irony of something like this is that the act in and of itself is so nauseating that the attempt is to take Councilwoman Resonetti and her daughter and associate them both and their family with the words and actions of a president who is alleged to break down communities and not unify. But yet, the individuals who decided to engage in this act, they acted in the same way as those allegations propose. They chose to tear down rather than to unify. You know, and for me personally, the piece that's, that's more ironic than anything else. You know, in its heyday, we had over 80,000 people living in this city. And now we're down to around 45,000. I think the last mid-census numbers are showing somewhere around there. And from the exodus of IBM to COVID-19 and everything else in between through those decades that has impacted this community, that has impacted this community's vibrancy, that has impacted this community's economy, you would think that a community like this that opened its arms up to someone like me to come here, to call it my home, to buy a home, to be a part of my community, that a young, strong, intelligent woman, a native-born daughter of Binghamton would be given that same equity. You know, for those of us who sit on this body and for those who we work with in the political world, if you will, what it takes to get an internship at 1600 Pennsylvania Avenue is months, if not even potentially up to a year in its requirements. You know, depending on the type of internship that you have in the White House, you need letters of recommendation from members of Congress, background checks. This is not your normal application. You know, I'd like to think that at the end of the day, we can rise to something higher than to not check our egos at the door and be bound by a stupid letter after our last names that is indicative of nothing more than a political party. Anyone who engages in an act on family is inexcusable. Inexcusable. And I say that as someone who has no children of his own. I'm a first-generation American like some people on this body are. And we know the stories of our families that came here and dreaded to make their lives and their families better. We're not always going to agree on everything, but this is unacceptable. And I'm glad to hear that my colleagues are in support of that. And I sincerely hope and pray that that doesn't happen again. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman Coringie. So I guess it's my turn. So last week, my family came under attack by some members of the local Democratic Party by posting a picture highlighting one of my children. And of course, presenting them in a false narrative. First, let me just say that I do want to thank those colleagues and members of the community, Republicans and Democrats, who reached out to me directly, expressing their outrage over this. That has really meant a lot to me and to my family. And Councilwoman Burns, I certainly did not mean, I don't want you to think that I want, I cut you off earlier just struggling, trying to figure out procedurally how some things work. And to give you the opportunity to speak later and during our comments. So I just wanted to make sure that you knew that I wasn't trying to cut you off in any way. And I want to thank you, you were the first one, actually, you're the only one from, well, this, from Democratic Party here in this council that reached out to me. Thank you. So anyway, it's been a few days. And to be honest with you, I still have a hard time finding the right words to accurately express what I'm thinking and what I'm thinking about. I certainly didn't expect anybody to go so low. But, but you know, I'm going to give it a shot in describing it, okay? What I think about it. And I think actually what I'll do is I'll try and do that by borrowing some of the language that was used in messages that I received by some of the same people who were directly involved while pretending they knew nothing about it. Disgusting. Unacceptable. Appalling. Despicable. Low. Pathetic. Inexcusable. Shameful. I actually think the print did a pretty good job on their own describing exactly how dirty this was. But I'll add to that. I will add that as a mother, the sadness, disappointment and concern that I felt is my, the safety of my family had been jeopardized potentially, that that sadness and concern was immense. A line had been crossed that should never have been over local politics. I do want to thank my family. They, they didn't ask for this. And yet they continue to support me, to encourage me and to remind me that those who have no truth or integrity to stand on will resort to lies. The apology to follow that was mentioned a couple of times here really was equally frankly disturbing as the original post. You know that the comments and the apology were deleted, they were taken down. And that really additionally showed the lack of any speck of integrity by those involved. And for lack of a better word, it was interesting for me to witness what was unraveling. And really through your own actions to see you exposed for the liars that you are. And you know who you are. I'm not talking to all the Democratic Party, you know who you are. I actually have a lot to say. But I'm not, not tonight. I will save it for another time. But I will end just by saying this. Just as my family sees this for what it is, so does the community. What the community sees is that I kept my campaign promise to fight crime, blight, to advocate for our streets to be paved, for parks and our neighborhoods to be clean and safe and accessible to all. And those accomplishments have been noted. And you know what? I'm starting to think some don't like it. As the president of city council, I will continue to work hard and I will absolutely not allow anyone with such low moral compass to derail me from my work. Really, this only strengthens my resolve. Motion to adjourn the meeting, please.
So moved.
Second.